To stand as one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Batteries need to respond.
Um, if everyone could please sign some electronic devices as needed. Uh, motion to bring the agenda to the table made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Ms. Jersey, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Um, any additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda?
There are none at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Motion to adopt the agenda as is. Motion by Ms. Jersey, seconded by Ms. Greco. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Approval draft minutes, May twenty first, two thousand twenty five. Motion, Ms. Jersey, seconded by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Student board member update. Giada.
On June sixth is the high school art show. It starts at five thirty P M. The senior class trip starts after school tomorrow. And the varsity award ceremony is the eleventh. The blue and white ceremony and the Panther Parade at the high school is the sixteenth. And the last night concert is also the sixteenth at six thirty P M. In the auditorium. Regent's week spans from the seventeenth of June to the twenty fifth. The twenty seventh is mandatory graduation rehearsal for any students graduating. Ticket distribution will take place at the rehearsal and each student will get six tickets for the outdoor ceremony. If the outdoor ceremony is moved inside, there will be two tickets for the auditorium and four for indoor. In in the cafeteria. Sorry. Graduation is the twenty eighth and starts at ten A M. Graduates need to report by nine A M. The high school had a really successful blood drive with a record amount of donors on May thirtieth. The AOF had a well-attended fundraiser at the Fair Oaks Drive-In with the movie being Lilo and Stitch. Quentin Lisiaga last week took home first place in the high jump and long jump. At the section nine championship track meet at Roundout Valley High School. Not only was he crowned champion, who also set a new record at the school with a high jump at six foot six. And yesterday beat his own record at state qualifiers, setting the new high school record at six seven. Abby Morse will be competing in the New York State Golf Championship on June eighth. And this weekend, the Key Club raised almost two hundred fifty dollars for the SPCA. As well as getting one of the dogs that they hosted adopted at the training post. And taking home, taking back to SPCA donations of food and blankets for the dogs. There's one more student distinction, student of distinction award ceremony coming up. And music students were thrilled to once again be honored best community for music education. By the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation for the fifteenth year in a row. Finally, Alexandra and I would like to thank the entire Board of Education for welcoming us and get, helping us give the student body a voice. We feel respected and included, and thank you for that. All the support that you have shown us, we are very grateful for.
Thank you. Any questions for Giada? Thank you very much. Uh, moving on from there, we have a presentation this evening, Empowering a Healthier Generation Competition. Um, I'll pass this along to, uh, the folks from one eighty.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us today. Does this work? Do you speak into it?
We, we shut it off because there's a lot of feedback, but we can hear you.
Um, my name is Megan Mullally Gore, and I'm the Director of Health and Wellness at Sullivan one eighty, so I provide oversight to two programs. One is the Empowering a Healthier Generation Program that we're going to talk to you about tonight, and the other is Youth Mental Health. Um, I just want to draw your attention to the folders that we left for you. There's quite a bit of collateral material in there. But we chose it specifically because there are so many Monticello students in there. Many of our RAC cards, there is great participation with the high school. Um, some of your high schoolers just attended the Warrior Teams event that we had at HOP. Um, which was a suicide prevention and suicide awareness presentation. So that just happened. Your students are in there. Um, but another thing that we wanted to feature is Hope Squads. Hope Squads is a three-year pilot that we've had happening with Fallsburg and Eldred School with the Office for Mental Health. That will be one of the opportunities as our new grant cycle opens in just a couple of weeks for you guys to take advantage of. But we would like to ask for specific support from the board, not only for the two competition schools who are here today, stacking the odds of you winning something very big in a, in a very positive way. But also because we do need H G advisors at Chase School and R J K Middle School. R J K started off so strong. They have inspired the entire county with their Spartan Club. We now have six Spartan Clubs across six schools in Sullivan County, all racing this coming weekend. That includes Cook Elementary, um, Monticello High School, and R J K specifically from your district. So if you could help us gain, um, some buy-in from Chase School and R J K, we would like to continue our program there. Now toward what we are here to talk about, the Empowering a Healthier Generation presentation. I was here about two years ago talking to you about the, um, programs that we had in each of your school buildings. So I think that you are aware that our mission as a nonprofit organization in Sullivan County is to turn around the health of our county one degree at a time. Next slide, please. Um, we talk about health all the time. We really often lead with our county health rankings. Last time I was here, we were ranked sixty-one out of sixty-two. During COVID, we hopped up to sixty. Now we are at fifty-seven. So something is going right, and we are really excited about continuing heading, heading up those county health rankings. Um, next slide. Uh, public health and prevention spend, spending. It is vitally, vitally important to us that we focus specifically on prevention and our youth. As you can see on the pie graph, uh, measly, I can't really even see it. Less than five percent of, um, healthcare spending, U S healthcare spending goes toward prevention. So that is why we have that as a focus at Sullivan one eighty. Next slide. We have many programs now, much of which are school-facing, um, and your schools are taking advantage of them. Beautification, we have beautification in three Monticello school buildings. Catskill Edible Garden Project, we have in many buildings, and that program continues to grow. Empowering a Healthier Generation, of course. We have the Healthy Fire Department Challenge, which is not school-related except for youth that are participating with the Monticello Fire Department. We have Youth Mental Health, which I talked to you about. Um, lots of trainings and workshops that you'll find in your folder. School nutrition has been a huge focus for us. We have farm-to-school programs, some of which are specific to student-led programs, so your students can get grants if they want to make a change in their cafeteria. We also have the Backpack Program and Food Cantry Program, which is a partnership with Hudson Valley Food Bank that Monticello is taking advantage of. Um, a lot of our work, as I said, is in prevention. We have the Catch My Breath, which is offered in multiple school buildings within Monticello. We have interns and we have scholarships. So that is what makes up Sullivan one eighty. I am going to pass it. Oh, no, Michael, it's still me. Okay, uh, you can skip to the next slide. This is a, um, org chart that you are welcome to interact with on our website. Um, it lists the way that our Healthier Generation organization is set up. We lead with our, um, wellness coordinators. Ryan Jasper is here today. I want to commend him and Stacy over there. They both put in hours and hours of work into the wellness policy, which may or may not have been brought before the board yet. But this is a triennial review, so it is federally mandated that your school participated in a triennial review of your wellness policy. You had a WellSat scoring happen. Ryan put the WellSat, uh, to practice, so all of the hours of that is now complete. Um, you, by June thirtieth, will be in compliance with the federal government, so congratulations. Um, um, then we have our H G advisors. You'll see that there are a couple vacancies in Monticello schools. We want to fill those vacancies. And then we have the Healthier Generation School Resource Committee. There are more than two dozen organizations in Sullivan County that provide free tools, resources, and equipment to schools. You're utilizing many of them. We can make connections for all of them if you see any that are of interest to you that aren't already in your school. I am going to hand it over to my colleague, Kristy Turbush, who is the Healthier Generation Manager of our program.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to be here with you tonight and to support the two schools that are in the competition. Uh, if you could go to the next slide, please. So with the Healthier Generation Competition Grant, the grants are meant to boost schools to a higher level of health and wellness and create a campaign to promote the goals of the district's wellness policy. So, uh, the staff here have been thinking about a project that would, uh, boost the wellness in each of their buildings and had come up with an idea that they're going to share with you and have been working on that for the past year and a half or so, and will be judged on it shortly. The four school buildings in the competition this year are Eldred High School, uh, Livingston Manor High School, and then Rutherford School and Cook School here in Monticello. The competition has included up to this point, marketing and communication about this wellness policy, attending Healthier Generation Council meetings, um, participating in the district wellness meetings, which Ryan has led, and then the judging process, which will happen in September. Uh, at the judging, uh, here, there will be a site visit, both at the, uh, Cook School and the Rutherford School, as well as a presentation. I'd like to introduce Kathy McFadden and April Rutledge, who will tell you about the project that's happening at the Cook School.
Hello, I'm Kathy McFadden.
I'm April Rutledge.
And we can change the slides. So our initiative was connection to nature, and we spent a lot of time last summer building our outdoor areas.
So in this picture, you can see the entrance to our nature path that we built. We had some staff members build some mud kitchens for the students, and then when school started, the kids helped us plant some fruit trees that hopefully they'll be able to use in the coming months.
And one of the things that, um, along the path that we added, because it's very flat in the backyard of Cook School, is we added hills for the kids to climb over the hills and some other activities, bounce things and things along the path. We, um, we started out our grant with ten staff members attending a forest school training. Um, they volunteered to give up their weekend to go to this training in Hank, Hankins, New York. It was great. Um, our principal, Ginny Garrett, joined us, and, um, we learned a lot there that was shared with the children. We've also offered workshops during the school day to our teachers. And we collaborated with the Sullivan West Central School, High School, and the Homestead School to observe some of their greenhouses and gardens and outdoor classrooms. And we're collaborating more now with the Homestead School, sharing our outdoor education ideas. We started a new program this year, Nature Ambassadors, where our second graders took a survey at the beginning of the year of how they felt about nature. We had, had to have kids who were willing to pick up bugs and spiders and be in the dirt and mud and snow and ice and rain. Um, and they became the leaders of the school. Um, they tried out snowshoes. They planned our winter fun day. Dr. Evans interviewed them, which were one of the girls that highlighted being a lecture ambassador, and, um, we, they're, one of the things they did, take a field trip to the forest reserve in Smallwood, where they got to try out some things in the actual woods, doing experiments and making trail mixes, as you can see in the picture, and exploring the waterfalls and water and things like that.
And we've also had kids help us build things during the summer. We contacted some of the families and they brought their child in to help build the bridge. And the other day, we stayed after school, and some of the students that were in the after-school program helped us build the shed. So they're involved in everything they're doing.
We planned some special events. We started off with a ribbon cutting on the day of the Big Apple Crunch. And the whole school is out there. Uh, we organized a lantern walk in November to bring in the community and the families to enjoy our nature path under a full moon with just their lanterns they made that night. Um, as we said, we had our winter fun day, which the kids thoroughly enjoyed. Many of them had never been on a sled before. So they enjoyed sliding down the hill at Somerville Field.
And then for our speed night, we did a nature-based education theme, so they had star lab. They had the chickens, the little baby chicks with the life cycle. Polar player, polar bear lover, because everything was based on nature, and they really loved it.
Our literacy night, which happened in early May, was a rocket, uh, reading is out of this world, where all the children watched their Bible rockets they made in class. And, uh, their families were outside, even though it rained again. They really enjoyed that. Uh, this coming Saturday, nineteen of our first graders will be competing in the Spartan Race, along with Waterton, who's been organizing that. And this coming Wednesday, June eleventh, we have ninety children participating in our nature-based play that they'll be putting on for their families called Flourish, a secret garden playbook. We couldn't have done any of this without our collaborations, volunteerism.
We had bear landscaping coming to help us with the, the nature path, digging up the sod and building the hills. Um, the Town of Thompson, along with other local businesses, brought in the woodchips to help us create the path.
We had, uh, Monticello Home and Garden, Garden donate a lot of the pallets that we used to build the mud kitchens. Um, the Town of Bethel, we coordinated with them for the field trip to the forest reserve at Smallwood, with the town supervisor met the children and talked to them about how that was came to be. Uh, we had girl scout, our girl scout trips that need at Cook involved. We had Catskill Mountain Keeper, which is the middle pitcher, come in to talk to our nature ambassadors about the Leave No Trace program. And, um, some of our volunteers are some staff, as well as our own family members, and my brother, who is one of our carpenters. Um, he is a technology education teacher at Valley Central Middle School. So he has his students involved in making the mud kitchens and things that, additional mud kitchens that will soon be on the grounds. And we have, um, Scouting America, and they're involved because of Miss Waterton. And after our presentation, our eagle stepped away. Brent Moreno will be talking about his project that he'd be coming to the Cook School to go along with our culture. We had the support of our administrator who loves outdoor education just as much as we do.
So before, uh, we asked Kaylee to come up to talk about what's going on at the Rutherford School, we thought we would take a second to ask, uh, you to help and support the schools in each of their programs here. So, um, ways that we have asked schools to do that in the past is to help secure guardians, staff, student, and community support for the wellness committee. Uh, we always like to see especially community members involved with the wellness committee. Invite the wellness committee representatives to present at future board meetings if there's something you're interested about. Share ideas for the, um, first and second place awards with the advisors. The first-placed award is seventy-five thousand dollars, and the second place is fifty. They're, uh, having some, uh, ideas put together now on how they would like to spend that money, but I'm sure they'd like to hear from you also. Encourage information sharing on all health and wellness initiatives. So just keep spreading the word and letting people know what's going on here and get everyone excited. We'll be having the celebration on Sept- September twenty-fourth at Bethel Woods, starting at three thirty. You're all welcome to join us there and, uh, support your schools and hopefully see them win. Next, Kaylee will come up and talk about Rutherford Elementary School.
Hi, everyone. Go to the next slide, please. Um, so I titled my project, Brains and Bodies. Um, I just feel it was a good support of our students' brains, as well as their bodies, um, through what I did. Uh, so we currently have a room. Um, I've been there now. I'm in my eighth year. And it's always historically been called the ALC Room, and it's just this extra room at the end of the hallway past the office. Um, and we really wanted to support it and, um, make it more of a positive and welcoming room for student support, especially their mental health. Um, historically, it's been a room that, you know, if they had to finish a test, or maybe they were that big a distraction in the classroom. Um, and, and that still is what it's used for, for, but I think it was more of a sense of, um, not having that toolkit for them to be able to go in there and to take and like be that better person when they leave and, um, trying to really avoid any of those, like, heavier misbehaters that could become a big classroom distraction. Um, but again, it didn't really have a lot of, uh, items in it that really could support the mental health. So these are some of the pictures of, um, the things that we purchased. You know, there were some classroom chairs in there as well, so we just put some cushions on them, as simple as that, um, some flashy posters, um, some fake plants, um, some books for them to read while they're there, weighted stuffed animals, um, their cool starlight. We actually visited, um, Crosby Elementary in Fallsburg, and, um, they kind of have a very similar room, so it was kind of based on what they were doing. Um, we've used it a lot more this year, um, in the sense for kind of those checking connect kids. Um, we've had staff members go in there. Um, Mr. Marantlia has really enjoyed using that as kind of just, uh, intervention for those kids before they return back to, uh, their class. So it's been very successful. We, um, our, our goal, even by the end of the year, the last fourteen days that we have left, is to rename it. Um, because again, historically, I think being ALC for as long as it has been, it just has this like negative stigma to it, so we wanted to change it. We got some recommendations of, um, name changes from the different grade levels. So those kids that have really felt that impact from it this year, we're gonna, um, change that, so it's not gonna be ALC this year, sorry, next year. That's the goal. Um, the finished trail is, uh, we actually just installed these last week, um, buildings and grounds put them in. So these are, uh, signs that are going around our back, um, yard, just kind of along the edge, and they're interchangeable. So we're going to, um, we made a bunch of inserts for them that are gonna have a multitude of different types of academic and S E L and, um, exercises, um, for them to follow. So I actually put the first three in today, and it's actually, um, a mood meter. And on each mood meter space is a related, um, activity. So obviously, a mood meter, like those high energy, um, are like, you know, lunges and jumping jacks. But then there's also the, um, kind of the low calming mood meter part, which is a lot of like breathing and affirmations, um, putting in some multiplication. So there's a lot of, um, different activities that my wellness committee, uh, was able to come up with. So we're gonna, you know, do it for the rest of the year and then keep it going until next year. Um, we also purchased snowshoes, um, for enough for one class, um, and then a few adults to go with them. We didn't get them in time for the cold winter weather this year, uh, but we will be planning to continuously use those, and those are something that we now always have at KLR, which is great. Uh, this has been our biggest success, um, that I, I think we're all very proud of at KLR. It's a program that we purchased through the grant called PDIS Rewards. Um, our PDIS program has been there, but has not been super strong over the past couple of years. Um, and we, our PDIS committee really worked strongly with, uh, the Bosse's, um, an individual from Bosse's who is good at PDIS. I guess, PDIS expert, as you could say, and, um, really improved the matrix of PDIS, um, and expectations of our students in all different parts of their day. Um, and we were able to use this program to support that. Um, if you're not familiar with PDIS, it's the old-school way, is kind of handing out paper tickets, and then those tickets, they can hand in for rewards. This is all online. Um, so to hail our students and cupcakes, but I know that it's been a very big success. Um, you know, with the positivity, they get to use these points. They earn them in their own class. They can earn them at specials. And then they can also spend them within their classroom store, um, and they could also spend them in a school store. So, um, weekly, they get to shop at the school store. It's a mix of actual tangible items, or it's a mix of experiences. So, uh, Ms. Serano put in a student lounge on our stage. That's one really popular one. They get to purchase tickets to go eat lunch on the student lounge and spun comfy chairs, which has been really great. Um, the biggest thing that we've really noticed in, um, in this program is our heavy decrease in the amount of referrals. Um, we always talk about the, um, like insubordination, right, physical contact, um, inciting a disturbance. Those are kind of the top three heavy hitters, and there's been a major difference, uh, month to month from last year to this year. Um, there's many factors, obviously, that change year to year, but I think that this program has been a big motivator for our students to, um, not get to that point of showing those, uh, leaders that have led to those referrals, which has been really positive. Um, our ruler program is something we were, were trying to also improve along with PDIS, um, some things, and we should go to the next one to, uh, sorry, next one. There's another one with a mood meter. Okay, that one. Um, so this is kind of, we have these mood meters in each hallway, um, the bottom left, um, which, and we have it both English and in Spanish. Uh, the goal is that, is just to have that always accessible for teachers and staff members to use with students to recognize that, um, emotional intelligence throughout their day, kind of where they are. Um, the other signage is based also on PDIS. So each month, we have a, uh, characteristic that we do want our students to, uh, show and maintain throughout their day. This is also still tied into PBS Rewards, where they're receiving those, um, they're receiving those points as well. So this is displayed all in the hallway. Um, we worked with Keller signs to get a lot of signage for KLR, uh, through this grant, uh, through PDIS and through the ruler. And you can go back to, sorry, the border. Uh, and one more. Sorry. Um, so Gaga is super, super popular, uh, at KLR, um, and most schools. Um, so we do a Gaga pit, as well as a nine-square court. This was donated by Cornell Cooperative, um, extension. So, I mean, you'll find kids in the Gaga pit all day long. Um, Ms. Serano did order another one, and this one has a floor, so it's not going to be so muddy and dirty, which is great, uh, as well as, uh, nine-square, which is, um, basically four square in the average, nine squares, and kind of like volleyball. It's a new game to me. And a staff member in the wellness committee kind of recommended it, and we were able to get one donated, and kids absolutely love it. Uh, we also have this donated, a celebration park, so, uh, it's a whole mix of outdoor and indoor activities. Uh, the goal here is, we want to use it kind of as an alternative to food celebration, so classes might use it for just a class celebration, or maybe a student who's unable to send in those cupcakes, or send in any kind of food, um, celebration, they're able to use this instead. Our goal next year is to send out a letter to families, um, in the sense of letting them know that this is an option in case maybe they are unable to send in those cupcakes or anything like that. Thank you.
One of the last things in your packet is, uh, some of the trainings and workshops that we offer. Uh, you can see there, there's a bunch of things for both mental health, vaping prevention, and, uh, the basics. It is a course for parents and very young youth. The next slide. And then just our Community Resource Guide, which we're really proud of. I, is I, yes. Um, we update it every year. It's a resource for families and anyone who is looking for information on ways to connect with providers or, uh, parks or different spaces that, uh, people can exercise or look for additional help that they might need. And that's it. Thank you for having us this evening, and I am open to any questions that you might have.
Last I heard you in Fallsburg, when you delivered, um, we were the most obese?
Monticello? No, Sullivan West is.
Sullivan, Sullivan West?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, well, it goes by age group, so it's ranked by elementary, middle, and high school. Um, I don't recall Monticello leading, but we
Sullivan County out of all the counties.
Yes. Oh, yes, Sullivan County, yes. Sullivan County has the highest rate of childhood obesity in the Hudson Valley.
Wasn't also dental problems as well?
Sullivan County has the highest rate of cavities that are untreated amongst all third graders in the Hudson Valley.
I'd be really curious for a case study with Livingston Manor Roscoe and, uh, more natural foods compared to what we serve with more processed foods and the healthier generation that's coming.
That's great. Um, so we actually had a Board of Directors meeting today where we shared a lot of what the schools are doing. And the board has decided, the Sullivan one eighty board just has decided to get together for a retreat so that they are able to bring all of their resources together with universities like NYU, Cornell, and Columbia, so we could get, um, doctorate students to do studies in our schools in Sullivan County, along those same nutrition lines.
Then among the cacophony of your tools, if there's a way that we could have farm-to-table here, if we could make inroads?
Yeah.
That's really something. I'm not speaking, I can't speak for the board. I can speak for myself. That's something that That's something that I'm very interested in, only second to the stadium.
That's great. So, so we have been working with Monticello, with Dawn Parsons, who, and you have another food service director. There's two that work with Monticello.
Kristin Hupman.
Kristin, yes. They have been wonderful. They have brought new ideas to the table and we are looking to secure more farm to school dollars. And we're learning about how the entire system works and borrowing some of what has worked at Livingston Manor. They're baking their own bread. They're making their own bone broth.
Baking their own bread, really?
Yes.
That's awesome.
Every day. Yeah.
Every day. Must be awesome to smell in school.
So there's now a food service conference that happens annually and you guys are participating. So we're really excited about that work. Yes, too.
Is Mr. Moran presenting on a project going on at the Cook School? Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're done. Unless anybody has any questions. I was thinking about the sledding. I remember that, hearing that before Cook School. And I'm just curious to know what all the kids involved in sledding, you know, were they all excited about it? I only ask because sometimes you have an initiative and somebody goes out and maybe ten percent of kids kind of hang back and they don't want to be involved. I would think sledding, everyone wants to be involved. So that kind of concludes. Would you say like most, most of the kids were?
Sure.
I only had indoor snowball sites with cotton balls and different things.
Yeah, there were like so many, three levels of options. So the permission slip and the explanation for that activities went out to the families. Families also indicated if they needed help supplying, you know, breast supply, snow pants, boots, whatever. Students had the opportunity to go sledding. They had an area where they could play on the pavement and just make snowmen and do things like that. And build ice, like use things, the coloring of the snows. And then, and then there was an indoor area where, as Charlie just described, if we brought snow in and they were able to do things, you know, for medical reasons or whatever parents wanted. But the majority of the kids were up settings.
I, I just think I've heard of reading initiatives before where you have every, every week or still are Friday. You have a two hour delay or one hour, something like that to read and work. I just think it sounds pretty cool to have something like that. And your schedule, maybe once every week or two where it's a time where all the kids can be outside. The snow will be doing something together, make a point at it. It's so great for them to actually have that experience to be outside.
Any other questions regarding?
I just have one quick question for someone. Are you guys addressing the sugar intake in breakfast?
So the sugar intake at breakfast is set by federal nutrition guidelines. We are, we are meeting with the USDA to talk about federal standards. So that's what's happening on an administrative level. On a level that happens at school, we talk about breakfast items and options. And some schools have swapped out things like Pop Tarts and Trix yogurt and other sugary breakfasts for healthier options. So that's been successful and others.
You can get sugars from fruit instead of getting it from refined stuff.
Yep, fresh fruit. So Liberty Now is serving more oranges. The, the food service department is not able to kill the oranges, but the aides and teachers that work in the lunchroom carry around a little tool and they're able to open every orange. So it's not completely about what's happening behind the, the kitchen line. It's also about what's happening in the lunchroom. Thank you. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Brent Burn. I am one of the youth scouts, troop eleven oh one from Rockdale. I would like to propose my new project, Cook Island Terrace School, which would be an amphitheater in the playground. And it would be sponsored by myself and after a long talking, that's what I decided to do after talking to my Eagle coach, Billy Wardertown, and after talking with this guy. That's what I thought. So that theater will have six benches on the slope. Which should be, have to be towards the basketball hoops, on the right side of the Cook School. The benches, there would be six benches total. Each one would be around eighty long with a foot wide. They would be concrete into the ground and there would be six total. It would be braced with full black borders as well. So they would last a very long time. We would paint them and stay them as well. And that's why I would like to pose that idea for my Eagles kind of projects.
Any questions for Mr. Moran? Victoria?
Thank you for coming, Brent. Can you tell me when do you plan to start in this project and when do you plan to finish the project?
I'd like to start the project around middle of August. My summer's packed and I would like to finish it around October.
And you have enough help?
Yeah, I do. I have the whole troop behind me.
How about your funding?
My funding, I'll be funding it myself in my scout account. I've already been money saved up for my scouting.
Congratulations on that. I guess I'm not gonna announce your fundraising anywhere.
They might be getting sponsored by, they might ask Ondi Bo to donate to us because they've done that before with other boys out, so that's a possible reason.
Very nice.
Wide lumber as well.
Yeah.
In Fallsburg. Both places.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I think it sounds like a great project and I'm looking forward to seeing it.
And thank you for picking us.
Thank you, everybody, for the information this evening. We really appreciate it. Moving on from there, we have our consent agenda. This is Greco.
I'd like to motion that we accept consent agenda items F1 to M1.
Do I have a second on that?
Hands in here.
By Ms. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much for that, Mrs. Greco. Moving on from there, we have information reports and discussions, board roundtable. I'm gonna start with you down on that left side, Ashley.
I attended the policy meeting earlier today and y'all attended their retiree dinner that was here for the staff. Other than that, it's been just out in the community and, and ball games, Little League ball games. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Ms. Walter?
I attended the section nine championships for track and field at varsity level around downtown high school. All of our athletes have done a great job this season as they round off and we're very proud of them. And I also attended the graduation committee meetings.
Did you get all the information you guys needed?
Yes. I believe we have everything listed.
All right. Ms. Holmes?
I attended the
Did you have fun?
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Jersey?
I attended the National Honor Society induction, which was a very nice ceremony. I also attended the code of conduct meetings for us to put the cell phone policy into the code of conduct as well as some other additional changes to some categories. And also attended the graduation committee. I want to thank everyone on that committee because
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Greco?
I attended policy as well as the retiree reception and the music concert that just occurred. Ended early.
With the emergency preparedness.
I also attended the graduation committee and my son is graduating. I just want to thank everyone for all they're doing, all the hard work to put graduation together and share. Very excited. I think they're still selling flowers and looking for more people to buy flowers for graduation. If any of those senior parents are listening. I believe they posted a parent square a while ago and if it's not in parents square, we can probably maybe have another post on that, right? I'm thinking, who do I ask for that? I just thought of that.
Either Ms. Gore or Ms. Bunfante.
Okay. In addition to that, I attended a hall of distinction. So we're starting to look for candidates for next year's or this year's coming. Candidates for the Hall of Distinction. We've worked very hard to make the committee even better than it has been before. So we're looking very forward to getting great candidates, picking some people having great ceremonies and hoping that more of the community gets involved to see some of the great achievements, accomplishments that some of our Hall of Distinction members have. And last but not least, I attended a Sullivan County School Board Association meeting where we are attempting to reorg. We did our appointment of some of our officers and moving forward, we're working on restructuring and planning a lot of great dinner meetings and just we'll be having in October, our annual award ceremony for our teachers and community members that are appointed. And I just want to throw that out there. So looking for nominations along those lines too, I guess. All right, moving on.
Excuse me, Ms. Galligan. We also have a new executive director of the Sullivan County School Board Association.
Yes, we do. Yes, I should announce that. That is Ms. Foss who sits behind me. If you'd like to take a bow, we could. Thank you, Ms. Foss, for helping out with all this.
Mr. Groves?
I'm really excited for trustee Gallian. She takes the reins in Sullivan High School Boards and Ms. Foss, who is amazing, totally. Also excited for CTEC, where National Honor Society too, both my granddaughter got inducted in twice. So it's been really a, a great reception and I love the honors kids and what they're able to bring and enrich the school with.
That's it. Ms. Larusso?
I have been extremely busy. I attended the Hall of Distinction, a couple code conduct meetings, couple grad meetings, a policy meeting prior to this, Sullivan County Board Association meeting. And I echo what Ms. Trustee Gallian said about the grad maybe doing a wonderful job. My son also is graduating this year. Hard to believe. And I'm very excited and proud of Brent Aaron from troop one oh one, making Eagle your project. And that's it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I guess I've been lax. You guys have been doing a great job. Good work. Moving on from there, we have principal reports. Any questions or comments regarding principal reports?
I just want to say that the reports are amazing and our district is doing some amazing stuff out there. Cook and Rutherford, what you're doing with the wellness committee, it is amazing to see. And I loved the little ambassadors during wintertime to see all that. It's just it's great to see our littles doing wonderful stuff and our older ones too, Mr. Jasper. Thank you.
Just had one question. Our playgrounds, are they supposed to be open for our policy through the evening? Cause I've had some parents say that it's been nice outside. They want to go play in the playground, but they have been locked.
I believe they are open until dusk, middle twilight. Is that the term?
Yes.
Right. So right around now, they would be closed up.
Can we double check that?
That's the policy, but I'll
Thank you.
Was that, and that wasn't during the school day?
No, it was five o'clock.
Anything else regarding principal reports? Thank you very much. Correspondence outcomes, we do have an item there under executive content. Policy committee memo. We did have a policy committee meeting prior to this meeting and I will pass off to Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley. Good evening, everyone. So the policy committee worked diligently this evening to I'll say tentatively finalize two significant policy changes that will take effect in the fall. One, as many of you know, the New York State Legislature and Governor agreed to a, a new state law that would prohibit student cellphone use from bell to bell in schools. Last week, the New York State School Boards Association issued its sample policy. So we had to basically take a step back and make sure that we are now using that policy as a foundation because that checks off all of the boxes in the New York, New York state law. And then we backbuild a few minor changes to make it consistent with what the ad hoc cellphone committee proposed earlier and what was in the first reading of the policy proposal done at, at the end of April. So basically, it's not, the changes that you see here that I've shared with you are not complete. The two significant additions to this policy are that the policy will include basically all student personal electronic devices. That would include also cell phones that aren't internet enabled. The state law prohibits internet enabled devices. The ad hoc committee and the policy committee believe that that should include, I guess you call them dumb phones now, but you know, cell phones that aren't connected to the internet, but still allow for text messaging and phone calls to be made as well as other personal electronic devices. And also that those devices would be turned off and stored in the pouches or the cubbies at the elementary school so that there is no distraction. So they're not vibrating or there's some, you know, desire by the student to go run and check it. So those are the, the minor tweaks to this policy. These changes will be made over the next, you know, I'll change the, the document and you'll have a first read at the June twenty sixth Board of Ed meeting. Hopefully, if that goes well, and then a second reading and adoption at the July third meeting. Ms. Carlin will be taking it back to the Code of Conduct Committee to make sure that there is alignment with, between the Code of Conduct and this policy proposal. And then that would allow us to include it in our calendar and get it out to community members, parents and students before they hit the doors in September. Similarly, the policy committee has made some very minor changes to a, the grading policy draft that I included in this report. But that is going forward and I want to thank Ms. Carlin and our administrators and other people who are involved in proposing changes and developing changes to our grading policy. The most significant change in here is that the seemingly never ending calendar of redo opportunities is being curtailed. So we are giving teachers and departments and administration kind of tighter controls over when and how redos might be considered. There will no longer be this kind of open time period where students can continuously redo assignments or assessments for a whole marking period. As well as other provisions in here that would expect teachers to grade assignments in a timely fashion and to up, post those assignments into the student management system in school tool so that parents and students can access them more regularly and in a more timely fashion than they do currently. So we see these as significant upgrades. This policy too, you can look at the one that's included now and that's, it's almost complete. There'll be a very minor change to it. And then that will, too, will be up for a first read at the end of June and then a possible second read and adoption, the first meeting in July.
So if the grading policy is updated, this is specifically for like the teachers having to grade faster and in a timely manner. Would they have to just grade faster or would they have to then put it into school tool? Because I know there are some teachers who have all their work graded, but they don't specifically put it into school tool because if a student wants to fix an assignment, they don't want to have to go back into school tool and fix the grade.
They would be expected to put it into school tool so that the grade is represented there. So that the grade, you know, can be seen by the parent or caregiver as well. And there's an accurate understanding of how the student's doing in the course rather than no grade at all. Or in some instances, teachers, if, if an assignment hadn't been turned in, they would keep the grade at zero. And then only update it once the assignment got turned in. And that's not necessarily accurate either, right? So those are some of the tweaks in that, that grading process. Any other questions on, so those are coming first read, June twenty sixth, second read adoption, July third.
Second policy.
All right. Any other questions? Moving on from there, we have capital project update. Dr. Evans?
Thank you, President Crumley. So as many of you have noticed, there's some significant work going on at the Ed Kennedy Field. And we're already running into some conditions that will require a change order. So any of you who are familiar with what that, that field was, how it drained and what might have lay underneath know that, you know, some compromised soil conditions have been discovered. You have some very detailed memos from our architect, our construction manager and a detailed proposal from Clark Companies where the contractor. They estimate that with the amount of new fill that would need to be replaced and stone and otherwise, they believe that it should be able to be had for under a hundred fifty thousand dollars. It is a pretty significant amount of space that's getting filled in. So basically what happened is as they're excavating and they're So basically what happened is as they're excavating and they're putting down, they're, you know, flattening. They're finding that there's compromised soil that needs to be basically taken out and you put in crushed stone and other. Uh, covers and otherwise to make it stable. So um, right now, the contractor has agreed, has offered to continue with that work at risk. In other words, that uh they are willing to do it at their own risk should a pol- should a change order not be approved? However, I would recommend to the board, not at this meeting, but at a future meeting, that this change order be approved because. Uh, there are contingencies built into the budget for this part of the process, knowing that when we. Dig it up, we don't know what's there. Uh, so it is well within those contingencies. And we also want to make sure that we have a good finished product. Um, so uh, it's not at this board meeting, but at a future board meeting, there will be a change order with this. There's no action that's needed to be taken tonight. However, if um. If enough of you feel strongly about it and want that work to cease. Uh, I would need to know that. Now, I would not recommend that. I think we do have a good faith. Uh, offer from the contractors that they're willing to do this at their own risk. Um, the architect and the construction manager are in full agreement with the work that needs to be done and the prices that have been given to them. By the contractor. Any questions on?
Does, I have a question.
Sure.
Do we have any uh? Time to think about as far as time is of the essence, not only that, but. In waiting and having anything increase in price that we would be missing out and adding to this change order?
Um, maybe not price for materials, but possibly. A bigger hole that might develop if we get significant rains tomorrow and over the weekend. So that's what the, that's why the contractor was so willing to do, do this work at risk, meaning at risk of not being compensated because. They dug a hole. They brought in material and that material needed to be filled in because if. If it did rain heavily, like it's expected too late today tomorrow and over the weekend, it'd be a bigger hole. And that would drive up the expense to your question, Sir Grove.
Is there a way we can mitigate this? Like making a decision now instead of later and pushing it down the road?
Essentially, we're kind of protected because, well, not protected, but the contractors doing, the contractors doing us a solid. They're doing the work.
Yeah.
Um, however, we know about this now. If you remember the last project, we were finding out about things eight months after they had already occurred. And then we were being asked to approve a change order for something that had already occurred.
Yeah.
It technically hasn't occurred yet. It's imminently about to occur or they might have started it, but this is a change order that will happen. Imminently. I believe there was a fifty thousand dollar uh discrepancy, not discrepancy, allowance in their contract.
Correct.
So the one fifty estimate. You're actually taking fifty off of that immediately. So you, we're gonna have a change order around that hundred thousand. The other thing that if Clark does this work. And it only comes out to be a hundred and twenty thousand, we're only approving a change order for seventy, you know? So it, you know, or it could go the other way, but we're, everybody was in communication. We knew about it. Stephen did a great job by catching it and saying, nope, this is the way you gotta proceed with this and make sure that it happens correctly. So we didn't get that change order six months from now.
Okay.
Um, so that's kind of the way that kind of all went down. Plus they're mobilized. I imagine another big reason they want to do it is because they probably already got another job lined up three weeks from now and they want to be out of here.
Hell, yeah.
So.
Let's go.
It promotes them to move, move, move rapidly.
Yes.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Alright.
And then uh, as the year comes to an end at uh particularly Cook and Chase. Uh, we have five classrooms at Chase and nineteen classrooms at Cook. That are going to get, you know, overhauls. Uh, basically the, the storefront windows are going to be removed. There'll be a new entrance. New floors, new ceilings, new lighting, new casework. Uh, right now, the contractors and the uh instruction managers are confident. That that work will be done enough for reoccupancy at the end of August. However, there's a strong likelihood that the casework and the finishings might not be complete by the time students return to school, but they will be safe for occupancy. So just giving everyone an update there and uh we're grateful for. Cook administration and staff uh and and the Chase administration staff too, who are. Uh, busy packing things up and making hard decisions on what to keep and what to pack away. Yep, that doesn't. Thank you, Ms. Galligan. Any other questions on the Capitol?
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Uh, moving on from there, upcoming events. Um, listed off in your agendas. Um, obviously graduation's coming up. There's lots of events coming up. Um, varsity awards next Wednesday. Um, seniors honors night. Um. Many things coming up in getting prepa- prepared for uh graduation. Community events, um, quite a few articles listed off there. Um. Lots of good press coming our way. Uh, did you grab the questions to come? Uh, I, Ashley, is it, did anyone sign up for questions or comments? Oh, you have it?
I don't know if she actually are facing the purposes.
Okay. Um, Mi- Mikey and Brandon, you got, you really don't? Are you sure? Alright, you can? No? Okay. Diana, you're, you're gonna make a, you're gonna come up and speak?
Yes.
Just let me uh do my little thing real quick. Board of Education recognized the value of public comment on educational issues and matters of public interest. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of public comment, following rules shall govern and will be administered by the presiding officer. Please note, first public comment period of forty-five minutes maximum duration will be at the beginning of meeting and a period of fifteen minutes maximum at the end of the meeting. Either period may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Neither public comment period is a time for public discussion. If necessary, the community member will be contacted for follow-up. If you wish to speak, place your name, email and or address and telephone number on the sign-in list indicating the topic of your comments. Prior to making your comments, state your name for the record. Identify any group or organization you represent. Comments limited to three minutes or less per speaker. Speaker may not yield his or her time to another speaker in order to extend the time for comment. No speaker shall comment on or identify any particular student or employee by name, position or situation in his or her comments. All comments should be directed to the board president for designate. Handouts or petitions are to be given only to the board president for distribution to the board. The board will receive and consider all written comments. A memo will be placed on the agenda on the next meeting under information or portion discussions to keep the board informed of the outcomes. It will be titled correspondence outcomes. And will be a public document. Mrs. Scerbella. You got the power.
Yes. Hi, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Evans, Mr. Crumley and Ms. Curly. I wasn't here last meeting, but I want to congratulate Ms. Gore for the tenner award. I want to congratulate the members that were reelected. And, and I want to um congratulate um. Everybody that was reelected for the elections. I'm glad that the, the. The budget was passed and you guys picked a good path to work on that. That board. I want to also congratulate you ladies for your sons that are graduating. I want to wish you, Ms. Dr. Evans. Um, to continue. I wish you health. I wish you strength to continue on. And um. I want to wish you to go on and continue your project. And um, I hope that even though we have differences, personality and everything, that we could work as a community together. On the school for next year. Thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you very much, Ms. Scerbella. Moving on from there, we have uh superintendent update and information, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley. So uh, just a, a few. Different things and I'll try to keep this brief. Most of my stuff was already mentioned. Uh, as was uh referenced earlier, uh, the Hall of Distinction Committee has uh produced a new. Kind of operating guidelines uh document and I want to thank uh Ms. Galligan Wiener. Uh, Ally Billious and Joanne Jasper, who served on kind of like a uh subcommittee. To help me work on that document and we presented that to the, the entire Hall of Distinction Committee last week and it was well received. So that's kind of, those are the new rules that will be, or the updated rules that we'll be operating under. Um, I did share with the board in, in my uh executive content, a copy of the survey. Uh, that I submitted to the State Education Department regarding uh. The uh, you know, what state ed should consider relative to the future of Sullivan County BOCs. That is there for your information. Uh, we received a letter today, uh, and I referenced this at our uh last meeting. About an error in uh BOC's aid calculations. Again, we estimate that our, our aid to be some way, the aid that is going to be corrected somewhere between two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so that would be kind of additional revenue coming back to us and you can see a letter in there from Dr. Deport describing it. Um, and then lastly, this is obviously celebration season. And uh, I want to congratulate all of our, our seniors. Our students who are receiving awards at this time of year, our National Honor Society inductees, our National Junior Honor Society inductees. Quentin Lisiaga and our other spring athletes. Um, everyone, you know, the seniors who are graduating, but I also want to recognize all of the staff members behind the scenes who are making those events possible. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes that uh I think many of us sometimes take for granted. Um, but I know that uh the staff, the teachers, the administrators uh put in. A lot of heart and soul and hours to making sure that these are, these are well-run events and enjoyed by everyone. So thank you, staff members. That's all I have.
Any questions for Dr. Evans? Uh, Victoria.
Yes, in this response, was this like an uh board? Was this discussed with the board, the response for BOCs or was it just?
So the, the survey was uh sent to superintendents, I'll say on or around May fourteenth. And uh, it was expected to be returned by May twenty eighth. And it was basically asking superintendents for their views on. How the local BOCs, what, what state ed should consider relative to the future BOCs. So. I have six colleagues in the county who. Fashioned similar, but not exactly the same way I responded, but also submitted the survey. It's my understanding that neighboring school districts around the BOCs did. Uh, I brought it to the board's attention at the last meeting. Uh, it wasn't exactly what I put in here, but more or less the same. Uh, so it really is just a survey of superintendent's perceptions of the function of BOCs now. The State Education Department will take all this information and then make a determination as to. Do we do a more involved redistricting study or do we leave it as is? If they are to leave Sullivan BOCs as is, they'll recommend the posting of a. Uh, to fill the DS position, the district superintendent's position. If they decide to do a redistricting survey, they would then seek more information from stakeholders. In and around Sullivan County BOCs about what might be done to uh. To the future BOCs. Should it be, you know, connected to another BOCs or uh. Should it be partitioned into different BOCs? But there's no expectation of board action. Um, if the Board of Education wants to provide a statement or a resolution. Um, I can make sure that that gets into the right hands uh at, at state ed or on the Board of Regents. Uh, however, there's no specific board action that's required around this.
No, I, I understand that. I just, I was in here last meeting. I watched it on. On Zoom afterwards and I just thought this would be a discussion to have with the board as a whole and then.
So it was not, it was discussed at that meeting. Um. Had any board member expressed, you know, particular things that they wanted me to include in that. I would have included it because I did not submit it until after that board meeting. So there was, you know, I guess consultation time, but it wasn't necessarily like a uh, a res- you know, a resolution to be adopted. Or a committee to be. To be held for it.
So with it, the way that it came across when I watched it was like, this is what we're submitting. There was no discussion except for what trustee Riley said.
That was, again, it was a survey of the superintendent. I brought it to the board's attention for, you know, the board's information and if there were suggestions that the board wanted to be considered, I would have entertained.
Just looking at this, it looks like, let's say, point six, it says, please provide details appropriate. Uh, regarding your opinions, like it starts off, the Monticello School District believes a redistricting data. So just my concern is this is from last meeting we had was that. I don't know the pros and cons to any of these options. So it's difficult for me to say that I would make a choice on that if I don't know. What are the implications of picking choice one or choice two? I can get a gist, but I didn't really hear both sides of it or I didn't hear um, you know, the pros and cons of each type. So then it was said, so this is, this is okay. This is just the superintendent's. Idea or their, their, their beliefs that they're putting forth. But then in this, it says number six and it just goes on to say the Monticello Central School District. So that's not really, that's like a little bit um. Uh. Contradictory, maybe is the word I'm trying to think of. Just not um, very clear to me. It looks like. As a board, we're choosing this and I honestly don't know um. The negatives of saying not one or not two. I wouldn't want BOCs to dissolve essentially. So I, I just, I. I'm just saying, this is things that have been thought of above me. Um. And I, I don't know how to help out in this and I wouldn't want it to be where my opinion is being said. Uh, here in the statement and it's not my opinion.
So just to be clear, what option, what options one and two are, right? So option one is status quo. No changes. BOCs remains as is. Go ahead and, and search for a new superintendent and everything stays the same. That's status quo.
Right, I understand that.
Option two, transfer school districts from a contiguous supervisory district. So think of. I don't know, Port Jervis or Pine Bush or Hancock or Downsville and recommending that they join Sullivan BOCs. I don't believe that that, that's our place to, to say, right? Uh, I'm assuming that those districts were also surveyed. They could check that off if they wanted to, to join Sullivan BOCs. Options three or four uh are around either. Some school districts in this BOCs go to a neighboring BOCs. Or option four is merge this supervisory district and BOCs with a neighboring supervisory district. So the concept of BOCs does not go away. We are still required and would still participate in a BOCs. The questions are, what might a future BOCs consist of? So all those programs, career tech, special education, uh, the management services that we. We subscribe to and get, those would still happen. It's just a question of the scale in which the BOCs operates. And the way we see it, based on the financials we've received. And uh, the feedback we've gotten from our administrators uh would. Benefit us to have either option three or option four. That's just the Monticello Central School District's perspective. If other superintendents feel differently about their districts, I'm sure they would have put that in their surveys as well. And the State Education Department is going to take all of that and make a decision as to what to do next. Um, that's what those options are.
So I think what the confusion was is that, and I totally understand, this is our superintendent's um evaluation and opinion. Um, it's not the board's uh, our position to, to make that assumption. It's, it's Dr. Evans. And I think um, I think we were just looking for more conversation on it. So it wasn't just the announcement of where the plan was. And the kind of way I look at it is, you know, we have to vote, right, as board members. We have to vote on BOC's budget every year, right? Say it again. Right. So, you know. How do I say this? Cause I'm tired tonight. Um, so. If we, if we don't think that BOCs, right, is doing the right thing, we actually will, will not vote positively for the budget. This year, we voted positively for the budget, but I think the vibe is not. With a, well, with perspective, it's kind of a little bit in conflict of, because I, I, I feel, and I'll just say this is me. Um, where BOC has probably fallen short for us, and I'll say it out loud so people remember me, is that. They should be expanding the programs. The, the program is there, but the program is needing to be expanded. So like, if we need more adult ed. BOCs needs to expand their adult ed. There's more CTE programs. There needs to be expansion. You know, we use them hot more for special ed programs. And we're having problems because we're having to ship our students because their program hasn't been extended to take students that we really need them to take. So it became a cost burden. So part of the analysis turned out to be, and I, I might not, I'm tired, so I apologize to everybody. Was a cost saving, I mean, a lot of uh, Dr. Evans was a cost-saving initiative for our school. That to send our kids in a more consolidated, am I correct, older BOCs? So it's kind of a, a budgetary thing. It's really not the board's place uh to make the decision. It's the superintendents of each district are coming together to answer these uh questionnaires and to give opinion based upon the information. To answer these, uh, questionnaires and to give opinion based upon the information and experiences we've had as a school district. And I don't know if that helped any or made things even more confusing, but, um, I just want to throw that out there.
Very well. Any other questions, uh, regarding, uh, Dr. Evans' update?
I just feel that, I'm sorry that I missed a meeting last week, and if I was here, I would have had more conversation with this. It was just the way it was presented. I. Agree with what you're saying in here. It was just the way it was presented.
And I think if. If it weren't so serious a topic, and it were a longer period than two weeks. It would have been able to play out.
Right.
But we have had a lot of discussions about.
We have.
BOCs over the last several years. You know, that, that's not, I'm going off what I've gathered from you guys and the administrators and staff too. To help me write what I think is an appropriate representation of how the district feels. That doesn't mean it's. Unanimous. It's not, doesn't mean every single person in the district feels that way. This is just based on what I see the financials are, the opportunities that could, might be out there for our students. And savings for our taxpayers if. This were considered, but I would rely on the State Education Department to say. Yes, it is, or no, it's not. They have a, an Albany eye view of, you know, how BOCs as a state function, you know, what's the, the ideal size of a BOCs? How much should administrative costs be for school districts? State ed has all that data. They would be able to say, you know what, uh, this is great, Dr. Evans, but really, you've got a good ear. Or, you know, that, that's really interesting, because that does seem to be. Not the norm. So. That's all we're attempting to do here.
And if I, just correctly, the next step is that, uh, could you just?
Yeah, state ed will make a determination as to. You know, which of these options they might consider pursuing. They might just say, we're continuing as is, and we're gonna do a search for a new district superintendent. Or they might say, we want to do some more studies and analysis. I don't think they're gonna jump to, all right. Five superintendents at option four, we're going with option four. I think they would say, well, let's take a deeper look at this, and that's what they did. I think maybe twelve or fifteen years ago was the last time that they, they did something like this, where they actually did the.
Or do some sort of analysis and stuff.
Yeah, it's not gonna, because it's on them ultimately to make that decision. So they're not gonna go at it hastily, and they're not gonna just rely on what. Dr. Evans put in his survey.
That's just one puzzle piece of probably fifty that they have to put together.
Yeah.
Right, I, I just better, more communication would have been better.
Yes, Ashley.
But when if we were to pick the three and four, which we did. Um, or, or you pick the option three and four, option two would have been more, um. Safeguarding. Sullivan County BOCs to keep their program. Is it what it?
Well, no matter what, no matter what happens, even if. Sullivan County BOCs goes away, BOCs is still gonna be there. It's just basically gonna be a different name. And maybe the programs will change, maybe the programs will morph a little bit, or whatever the case, if, uh. Orange Ulster came in, or is it Delaware or?
DCMO.
DCMO came down and kind of, or the county got split. Our school would still have BOCs support. It would just be pretty much under a different name.
I understand that, but when we just went to a dinner at BOCs to look at the programs they had.
Yeah.
I was resident, looked by the teachers that they had there and the programs they had there. So when I see, we're not picking option two at all. For me, I looked at that and thought, does that mean that they could potentially dissolve if the other? Uh, school board. Um, superintendents, or I'm sorry, the, the other superintendents of the district surrounding us also said, oh, and we don't want to do one or two, is that threaten? The liberty BOCs to dissolve, and those teachers and the programs would be broken up into other.
So what option two is basically saying it would be. Districts not in Sullivan BOCs. So think, again, Port Jervis, Hancock, dot, right, that they should join Sullivan BOCs. I don't feel that the Monticello Central School District should opine on that. That's really up to those BOCs. You're up to those districts, right?
Right, I understand that.
Um. But back to your question, um, if Sullivan BOCs were merged with, you know, let's say Ulster BOCs, for, just for example. There would be, that would be one contiguous BOCs. The building where that dinner was, the Rubin-Palak Education Center, is owned by Sullivan BOCs. That building would be owned in theory. I, I mean, I'm guessing that building would still be owned by the new BOCs. Um, and you could have services in that building still. So it doesn't mean that that disappears and evaporates. It just means there's now a consolidated BOCs with one central office over many more districts. So you're really, again, increasing that economy of scale.
And that's option four, right, when you merge?
Well, four is like the whole BOCs within another BOCs. Option three would be, these districts go to this BOCs, these districts go to that BOCs, and these, they would partition the districts. Within the BOCs.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Uh, moving on from there, we have our assistant superintendent for business, Lisa Phelan.
Thank you, President Cromley. Um, this evening I have the approval of the bread bid. We participated in the cooperative bread bid for DCMO BOCs. For the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Our construction manager put out an RFP for materials testing and special inspections and environmental monitoring for the work that's going to be happening. At Cook School and the field. I'm asking the board to award those RFPs based on those recommendations. We have the student activity quarterly report for January through March. And number five says Center for Discovery, it should say Center for Disability Services. Um, so I asked the board to amend action item T five to say Center for Disability Services contract.
I, I had a question about the bread bid.
Yeah.
So are the bagels not going to be coming from Monticello Bakery anymore?
So we do get bagels from the Monticello Bagel Bakery. We buy that under a microbid. That isn't, it's less than a certain dollar amount, uh, so we can just purchase directly from them. So we do, yeah, we do buy them from Monticello Bagel Bakery. We went down that road many years ago, and they don't get bagels from anywhere else in Monticello.
I just saw. I was like, what are we doing?
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We still get them from Monticello.
No worries.
I have a question on the bread bid. What are these donuts for? They're not for breakfast.
They're not, so. So that's. The entire thing is what? Was, um. Requested. If it doesn't have a quantity, we did not ask for it. So we didn't ask for.
Oh. Thank you.
So those are all the options. It's like for every district that participates in that cooperative, I think there's like forty. So some other district asked for that. So they, we did not ask, so we are not purchasing them.
Any other questions for, uh, Ms. Phelan? Thank you very much. Um, moving on from there, we have our update information from our assistant superintendent per curriculum, uh, Mrs. Carlin.
Thank you, President Cromley. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna pass a couple of things your way. Uh, I have two contracts on tonight. This first one that you're getting, um, a handout on is reading apprenticeship. Um, so reading apprenticeship is, uh, basically a way, strategies, and a way to teach reading. To our students that are struggling. Um, currently, we use Read One Eighty at. Both the elementary and the secondary level, but that's a program, so we're putting students on a computer. Um, we're asking them to do things on a computer. We're not actually working with them from a tier-one classroom perspective. Um, Read, Reading Apprenticeship is teaching teachers how to. Teach students that struggle with reading, um, in the classroom instead of putting them on a program. So. We have about five or six people that have already done a pilot training to see how the, how the training was, and if it's been effective, and, um, so far, those five or six people love it. Um, so this is getting the rest of our secondary interventionists trained. Um, any information that you need about reading apprenticeship, I've provided for you in what I just handed down. Um, the second contract is, um, our keynote for this coming opening day. Um, so this is Stephen, um, Burchak, if I'm saying it correctly.
Yeah.
Um, Dr. Byrd, and he was here previously several years ago, and. Um, staff have asked for him to come back. Um, so we felt this would be an appropriate opening day speaker for our staff this year. Um, so that is his biography that it's coming to you now, so you know a little more information about him. Um, and that is the second contract that I have on the agenda for tonight. Any questions?
I want to get the tier two.
The West Ed. So it's a three-day training. Is that gonna be done during professional development days? We're not pulling teachers out of the classroom again in order to train.
We are not. It, some of the training is this summer.
Okay.
Um, and the other part of it is, yes, during our profession, it's an option for teachers to be able to use that as the training. Yep, so it's kind of, and some of it's also online, like the training that the five or six people did during the school year. All of it was an online training. Um, they recommended having it in person, and that's why we decided to move in person, so it's kind of a hybrid.
And are we looking to, since it didn't work in the high school or the middle high school, are we looking to change it in the elementary school? Because we've got Read One Eighty for a very long time.
We are looking, this potentially is, this is more of a secondary, um. Strategy program. They also have an elementary, so we're looking at. Using either this company or also some other options, but not for next year. We're kind of attacking the secondary first. And then we're gonna move down to the elementary.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. So the, are, is it middle school and high school teachers who are gonna be taking this training?
In a, middle school and high school interventionists. Um, currently, the, the teachers that piloted it were some middle school and high school department chairs specifically teaching ELA and social studies. Um, and actually, we had a guidance counselor that also took the training so that they are able to, um. You know, talk about the training if parents ask for, um, any of our other teachers.
And, and, and does it say that you're, it's training for forty teachers? Is that how many te- teachers you're making their training?
And not necessarily. All in one shot. They might, we might have twenty go, and then, yeah.
Any other questions for Teresa? Thank you very much, Ms. Carlin.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on from there. We have our action items. Scracko.
Great, um, so we're gonna start with, um, I'd like to move, have action items T one to T four and T six. Approved as a group.
I have a second by Mr. Grodin. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Um, I like the motion that we approve action items T one to T four and T six.
Do I have a second on that? By Ms. Holmes, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Um, I'd like the motion that we. Amend the subject of action item T five to read the Center for Disability Services contract.
So we do an amendment, then we do an approval?
Yeah. Yes.
Do I have a second on that? By Ms. Stalter. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, item amended.
And I'd like to motion that we approve action item T five as amended.
Do I have a second on that? By Ms. Jersey. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. What do you got, Vicki?
I'd like to discuss, I can't, I can't, oh, um. Yeah. Oh, I think it's O one.
Wait.
The NB, that, and is the Bible amended?
Oh, that's correspondence.
Of course.
You won. You, you won?
You won.
Yes, you won. Oh, we're not, we're not there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll wait.
Um, so action items are clear. Uh, correspondence, uh, there is a, uh, correspondent in there, and it's the bylaw amendment, Victoria.
I would like to, uh. Vote on this. I'm not sure how we do this. If we, has to be brought up next meeting? Like a discussion?
I like Sullivan County, um, what Sullivan West School Board did, and I think. I think if I find, it's, it's opposed, right? It's proposed, it makes it look like it may, right, we discussed that you were, right? So, I don't know, I, I kind of like it after reading it.
So.
Unless you feel otherwise, I mean.
Well, this is a board decision, right? I, I don't, I'm just procedurally. I don't believe, maybe the board could just adopt a resolution of support per the attached. Or. I don't know if it's better for the board, if the board, the majority of the board wants to go forward with this, if it does its own form. And, you know, kind of repeats what's stated here, but then, you know. Submitted by. This board, but. So if, if the board wants me to go back and kind of do some digging around and bring you back information on procedurally. How to go about adopting it, I can do that.
Yeah, I'd like to do that in the next meeting, because we have to have this in deadline July eighteenth.
Mm-hmm. Does the rest of the board concur and feel the same way?
Yeah.
All right, if you could please take care of that, Dr. Evans.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, questions and comments from the public? Um, I took the sheet. Did anybody like to speak?
Who signed any red paper?
Me.
Don't worry.
No more questions and comments from the public. If you're here for a class and you need to get your stuff signed off. Any board member can sign your stuff off. My name's Tim Cromley. I'm running the meeting. And you guys waited way long in the year to get this stuff signed off. Motion two, Jared. By Mr. Grodin, seconded by Ms. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? So orders.